...challenges and the promise of a brighter future for all. Middlesex County works together by celebrating its incredible diversity of futures, planning for birth while honoring the past, investing in the performing arts, and raising the quality of life. Leading together, Middlesex County, New Jersey delivers on the promise of an even brighter future each and every day.
of the Board of County Commissioners. It is my pleasure to welcome Amy Petraselli, Clerk of the Board, to the stage.
The reorganization meeting of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners will please come to order. In accordance with revisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this public meeting has been published in the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger newspapers and posted on the Middlesex County website, as well as on the bulletin board in the lobby of the Middlesex County Administration Building at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Please welcome our newly-elected county commissioners, Clarabelle A. Ascona-Barber, Charles Kenny, NCO Scott McCollum, along with Sheriff Mildred Scott, Escondido Kenny Christmas, and Dr. Carter, Sergeant Martin Ronald G. Rios, and Sergeant Martin R. along U.S. Air Force Vietnam Veteran, in the salute to the flag of our country.
Present to the flag of the United States of America, the children of God, the religion
with Coast Service Bureau Division of the Middlesex County Police and Fire, Blackson
of God, the people of this nation.
Kings. Please rise and remain standing as the Honor Guard of the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office Please welcome Tangi Cobb from the North Brunswick Police Department, who will sing and the Middlesex County Office of Adult Corrections and Youth Services present the "The Star Spangled Banner." colors.
One more!
Oh, say, can you see By the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's
Feet, cover! Forward! march! march! detail! hop! out! face!
last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gay, proved through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star spangled banner wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Catholic Church, who will offer the invocation.
Let us pray. Lord, behold your people here assembled. We ask that you would bless these county officials, Lord, as they come before you tonight to be sworn into office. We ask that you give them the peace which comes from yourself, the peace of God that passes understanding. We ask that you give them your wisdom and to share in your great wisdom as they carefully carry out their duties. The diversity of our county is also its great strength, and we ask that to be all things to all people is indeed a challenge, but it also brings great joy. We ask them to remember that whatever work is undone, at the end of the day, they would leave it in your safekeeping, and get a good night's rest and be ready for whatever is on the morrow. And we ask above all that you would be with them and their families in carrying out their duties. And we ask, as we always do, in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the fifty-sixth Governor of the State of New Jersey, Governor Phil Murphy.
I can say comfortably, please be seated. Thank you so much for welcoming me back so warmly each and every year. It's an honor to be here at this reorganization, otherwise known as Jonathan Bush's birthday party. Happy birthday, Jonathan. A particular shout-out to a couple of folks here. I don't want to begin going down the line and naming a lot of people, but I have to say Kevin McCabe, God bless you, Happy New Year, and thank you for your extraordinary leadership. Middlesex County has produced an enormous roster of incredibly impressive elected officials. Many of them are up here on the stage. Four will have the honor of being sworn in again tonight, Clarabelle and Mildred, and then Chanel and Charlie, but to each and every one of them, led by the great Commissioner Director Ron Rios, to the extraordinary legislators that this county is proud to call their own, and especially to my partner in government, one of the all-time great leaders, Craig Coughlin. I'm not sure if folks remember, and to all the mayors, council members, other constitutional officers and elected officials up and down the county, it's an honor to be with you. I'm not sure if any of you ever read a book, heard of a book by Tom Wolfe called "A Man in Full." It's a step in the South. The subject of it is not relevant to tonight, but I think of it because Middlesex County is a county in full by almost any measure. It is the envy of counties not just around this state, but around this country. If you look at the passions, that strong and fair state that we talk about all the time, it lives and breathes, and in many cases leads right here in Middlesex County. Whether it's extraordinary education exemplified by the very college from which we meet, whether it's health care, not just second to none, but in many respects, America's medicine-chest county, quality of life, investment in pragmatic, practical things like state-of-the-art infrastructure, parks, just the way it does its business is the envy of so many. And it's also, I have to say in place, that from moment one, the very, very, very first person, long before I ever declared my candidacy for governor, the very first person I met with was Kevin McCabe, and that was not an accident. It says a lot about Kevin, and it says a lot about Middlesex County. So I'm incredibly honored to be back with you tonight. Again, I salute in particular the four extraordinary folks who are going to be sworn in. By the way, I can say each and every one of them, dear friends, and to each and every one of you, keep up the great work. I'm putting our state-of-the-state remarks together, and they were top of mind as I was coming over here tonight. And so much of what I'll talk about next week, you could just take out the state of New Jersey and drop in Middlesex County. My late mother would always remind me, you're known by the company you keep, and tonight and whenever I'm in Middlesex County, I'm keeping darn good company. God bless you all, Happy New Year, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor Murphy. It is now my honor to introduce the Speaker of the New Jersey General Assembly, from Middlesex County, Speaker Craig Coughlin.
Well, thank you. Is that the voice of Middlesex County leaders of the past? Well, thank you all for coming out. It's always a special privilege and treat to be here with folks from Middlesex County, a place where I grew up, a place that I call home, a place that I'm so proud to be from, and to celebrate the year that's passed and the opportunities ahead. You know, it's an honor to be here, as I said. Middlesex County has always been at the center of history, both for the state and for the nation. Our county's been home to important events and figures. During the Revolution, during the American Revolution, for example, was the site of key battles, the Battle of Bonhamtown and the Battle of Millstone. And in the nineteenth and twentieth centuries, the county became the hub of industry and innovation. Today, Middlesex County's home to a diverse population and is a major economic and cultural center in the state of New Jersey, as outlined by the Governor in his remarks. And Governor, thank you for being with us today. We appreciate it. It's a special treat to have you here today. You're doing a tremendous job, and yet Middlesex has a great friend in Governor Phil Murphy. Let's give him a big round. We all know that Middlesex is also the home to major universities and to hospitals and to Fortune 500 companies. And we boast a vibrant arts and cultural scene, a number of museums and galleries, performing arts, and all, in short, Middlesex County has a vital role in New Jersey and it's continued, it will continue to profoundly influence the growth and prosperity of this great state. That's not by accident. It's the product of vision, of leadership, and of commitment, which is spearheaded by the people you see on this stage today. Commissioner Director Ron Rios, thank you for all that you do. What a tremendous leader. To the entire Board of County Commissioners, to the constitutional officers, thank you for all that you do. And to County Administrator John Palamina and your team, thanks for being Middlesex County, the model that the Governor talked about. There are people throughout the court, throughout the state of New Jersey, who wish they had the kind of operation that Middlesex County has. And I'm especially excited to be here with all of you tonight as we celebrate the swearing-in of four extraordinary members who have demonstrated success over their terms and who are so worthy and demonstrate the wisdom of the people of Middlesex County by sending them back. Clarie Ascona-Barber, Clarie, thank you. Chanel Scott McCollum, the best honor we've ever taken in the state. Charles Kenny, my friend from Woodbridge, York County. And our groundbreaking, glass-ceiling-breaking, extraordinary Sheriff, Sheriff Mildred Scott. And together, you've all done so much. What an extraordinary year Middlesex County had in 2022. Destination 2040, and an exciting strategy for the county's future. The Middlesex County was able to announce transformative Community Innovation and Opportunities Strategic Investment Plan, which will extend educational opportunities to inspire innovation and entrepreneurship in Middlesex County College, the place where we sit today. But that's only the beginning. I think we're all proud of Middlesex County when we walk through Newark Airport and we see the sign, or we're in places far away and we see the TV ad, because it speaks to the vision and the future of this extraordinary county. But there's so much more. With Governor Murphy's leadership, and I'm proud to be part of the extraordinary delegation that we have in Trenton, we've worked to bring projects right back here to Middlesex County that are going to make long-term differences. Forty-nine million dollar investment in the New Brunswick train station, which is an overdue upgrade, befitting the front door of this incredible city, which whose renaissance is something that I talk about when I go throughout the state. When I talk about how redevelopment works, how a town, a city can be something more special than it was decades before, you need only to look to New Brunswick and the great leadership of Mayor Cahill. I'm sure he's here somewhere. Let's give him a big round. And New Brunswick is about to become a home for innovation itself. I think the county seat, in case you've missed it, is filled with cranes in the sky and recently topped off the new cancer pavilion, the first and only of its kind in New Jersey, and will cement New Brunswick and Middlesex County as a cancer treatment, life science, innovation, and training for the next generation to become of doctors and engineers and scientists. And speaking of innovation, let's have a big round of applause for the hub, an extraordinary project in downtown New Jersey. Started in 2025, it brings together all of the best of what government and private sector and quasi-government like Rutgers can bring together for a community. In 2018, Governor Murphy called New Jerseyans to do two things, to become an innovation state and a transportation state. He challenged us, himself included, to get both things right. Well, Middlesex County has done just that and is a microcosm for both. We in Middlesex County Legislature, the delegation, have been proud of our will in bringing infrastructure to this great county. And we do that with our friends in organized labor and the building trades, many of whom are here tonight. Let's have a big round of applause for all of you. They are a part of the movement forward of the county and in building careers for people. This year, we saw infrastructure investments across the county with the announcement of shovels in the ground for the South Amboy Ferry Terminal and the Carteret Ferry Terminal, shovels in the ground for the Perth Amboy Train Station renovation, which is long overdue, New Brunswick, the North Brunswick Train Station. The list is endless of things that we have been able to accomplish and that Middlesex County is leading this state forward in and answering Governor Murphy's call. But the extraordinary advancements in Middlesex County aren't limited to construction. It is no secret that the post-pandemic residents' paychecks no longer cover the cost of living, and they face real challenges. Middlesex County has stepped up. In 2020, they've worked hand in glove for the state to reduce, to take on the challenge of making things more affordable. Specifically, we worked in Trenton with the Anchor Program to bring real property tax relief, and that will help over two hundred thousand families right here in Middlesex County. And Middlesex County itself has been a tremendous partner in making sure that people took advantage of that. And as always, Middlesex County has remained a tremendous partner in our fight for greater food security and public health. The county's replenished organization continues to deliver free and nutritious food to our seniors, to our families, and to those who have fallen behind. County employees continue their truly terrific job at running vaccination clinics and to expand telehealth for the people of the county, to getting through residents the rental and utility assistance that they need, all of that, because the people who lead this county care about the people in this county. All of us who are fortunate enough to know the folks you see in front of you know who they are at their heart. And what they are are people who care, who genuinely want to make a difference, who dedicate themselves and their service to the people of Middlesex County in a way that is selfless and committed and long-term. Each of them has been involved in their community or in this county for a time that is often measured in decades. That kind of commitment, that kind of caring, that kind of dedication is what makes this county move forward in a way that sees the future but doesn't forget the values of the past. And as we move forward, and we continue to do that, we'll continue to be led by people who genuinely care. It's their vision, it's their caring that will make this county the great county that it was in 22, 2022, even better in 2023 and in New Years to Come. And they're assisted by some great leadership outside of elected offices. The Governor mentioned my dear friend, Middlesex County Democratic Chairman Kevin McCabe. What a terrific leader he is. And him. And one of the other people, of course, who pours his heart and soul into this county community colleges, my dear friend for decades, Gary Taffet. And he makes a difference everywhere, so many communities, doing things that I'm not sure all of us can describe. They're just generally referred to as arty things. Artie Savelli. And there too, Scott Child, from Aeneas Delgado, who brings a new vibrance and energy for this. It is that combination of people whose heartfelt concern and commitment to the future of this county has made it, will make it, and continue to be the best county around. Middlesex County is a special place. I couldn't be more proud to say that I'm from Middlesex County, and I know, like all of you, I share the excitement of the future. So this is an exciting day. Congratulations to everyone who's about to be sworn in. Thank you to all you have done in the past, to all of you who served now, thank you, to all of you. And all of you play a role. We have tremendous municipal leaders and other people who care and make a commitment to this county, this county. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for making Middlesex County the special place it is. Thank you for letting me be a part of that. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Speaker Coughlin. Please join me in welcoming Middlesex County's federal representatives, who will be joining us virtually this evening.
Hi, everybody. It's U.S. Senator Cory Booker. I want to start out by thanking the Middlesex County Government. You all make Jersey proud. You do so much for all the residents of Middlesex County, and I want to give a special thank you and shout-out to Commissioner Director Rios. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, but thank you for all the great work you do. This is extraordinary, as you gather to reorganize your government. This reorganization ceremony is a point of pride for all of New Jersey. This is not just some rote routine, it's a reaffirmation of our shared values and our shared commitment to Middlesex County. I want to give congratulations to everyone who's being sworn in today. County Commissioner Ascona-Barber, Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Scott McCollum, and Sheriff Mildred Scott. As a former mayor and city councilperson, we all share this knowledge of how important local government is, what we do in making a difference in people's lives, how they're often there in some of the more challenging times, but often there to help people have a higher and better quality of life. You all are on the front lines, not just in public service, but in preserving the heritage and culture of our country and making our nation and its promise more real to more people. You are the first people often our residents turn to. You're the point people for addressing concerns. You're the folks, when you go shopping at the shopping center, it takes you a half an hour, hour longer because you're talking to people. People are turning to you. You all are making sure that government runs smoothly and efficiently and effectively. The role that you all are undertaking is something that is of profound importance. Therefore, we know that you all have within you a deep-rooted sense of service. That is ultimately what patriotism is about, loving your community and country so much you're willing to serve and sacrifice for her. So thank you for your stewardship. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your service to Middlesex County. I know the best days of this great Jersey County are ahead, and I look forward to working with you to better serve the residents as well, be your partner in service. So congratulations to everyone. I wish you the best success, and I look forward to seeing you further down the road.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here with the representatives who come together for this reorganization ceremony of the Board of County Commissioners. This ceremony marked the end of an era and the beginning of a new one, and as a public official myself, I know the excitement that a new term can bring. There are blank slates full of opportunity and promise for the work that you do on behalf of Middlesex County. And for the residents that call it home, I have no doubt that you will fulfill your various duties with proud professionalism and dedicated resolve. After all, when folks in Middlesex County can rely on safe streets, clean parks, paved streets, when they can depend on the buses running on time and their schools being top-notch, residents are brought closer together with their neighbors and their communities. All of us have gone through once-in-a-generation challenges these past few years, from COVID to the economic challenges it brought, which is why it's been an honor to stand alongside you as we've marshaled historic amounts of federal funding for Middlesex County, whether it's the $280 million I set aside for the county and its municipalities in the American Rescue Plan, or the millions more we've secured to support public housing, benefit our first responders, and revitalize our neighborhoods. In my view, these federal funds are the way that we in Washington uphold our commitment to those closest to the people we represent. And as your senior United States Senator, you have my commitment that I will never stop putting New Jerseyans and its local governments first. In the same way that you all represent the residents of Middlesex, I'm proud to represent all of you in the halls of Congress. To be sure, we have work that remains to be done, but as we look forward to 2023 and as you all look forward to your new terms, I have never been more confident that our best days are ahead of us. So once again, congratulations on a successful election ceremony, and thank you again for your service to the state and the communities that we all love.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you tonight, but want to send my congratulations to Commissioners Charles Kenny, Clarie Ascona-Barber, Chanel Scott McCollum, and Sheriff Mildred Scott on their reelections. I also want to congratulate Commissioner Director Ron Rios and Deputy Director Santi Nara and wish them success as they continue to lead this great Commissioner Board. I say this often, but Middlesex is the best county in all of Atlanta, and that is
to the economic challenges it brought, which is why it's been an honor to stand alongside you as we've marshaled historic amounts of federal funding for Middlesex County, whether it's the $280 million I set aside for the county and its municipalities in the American Rescue Plan, or the millions more we've secured to support public housing, benefit our first responders, and revitalize our neighborhoods. In my view, these federal funds are the way that we in Washington uphold our commitment to those closest to the people we represent. And as your senior United States Senator, you have my commitment that I will never stop putting New Jerseyans and its local governments first. In the same way that you all represent the residents of Middlesex, I'm proud to represent all of you in the halls of Congress. To be sure, we have work that remains to be done, but as we look forward to 2023 and as you all look forward to your new terms, I have never been more confident that our best days are ahead of us. So once again, congratulations on a successful election ceremony, and thank you again for your service to the state and the communities that we all love.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here today. Sorry I couldn't be with you tonight, but want to send my congratulations to Commissioners Charles Kenny, Clary Ascona Barber, Chanelle Scott McCollum, and Sheriff Mildred Scott on their reelections. I also want to congratulate Commissioner Director Ron Rios and Deputy Director Santin Ara and wish them success as they continue to lead this great Commissioner Board. I say this often, but Middlesex is the best county in all the land, and that is a credit to the work and passion this county government puts in day in and day out. Middlesex County is leading the way as the innovation hub for technology and healthcare for the state and the region. The county has done an outstanding job keeping and attracting innovative businesses. This fall, I had the pleasure of moderating a forum with U.S. Commerce Secretary Gina Ramone at the Middlesex County Business Summit in New Brunswick. And she chose to come here because Middlesex County continues to be the example of how effective local government can complement national policies that are reshaping and growing our economy and workforce. Middlesex County continues to make investments in infrastructure, partnering with the state and federal government to make upgrades to mass transit and bringing new modes of transportation, like two new ferries that will soon operate out of Southam and Boy in Carteret. These major developments don't happen by accident. They are realized through the capable work of the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners led by Director Rios, and there are just a few examples of why Middlesex County really is the best county in all the land. Middlesex County is not only a great place to work, it's a great place to live and raise a family. Middlesex County has maintained a triple A bond rating for the last 22 years. The Commissioner Board is always looking towards the future and making major investments in education with world-class magnet vocational schools and overseeing the exceptional growth of Middlesex College. And the county government and its exceptional employees are always putting its residents first, providing vital services to those who need it most, like seniors and veterans. The county continues to approve and expand as many parks and open space and making investments in art and culture. It's a privilege really to represent this great county in Congress, and I look forward to continuing our work together to deliver real results for our constituents. So congratulations again to Commissioners Charles Kenny, Clary Ascona Barber, Chanelle Scott McCollum, and Sheriff Mildred Scott on your swearing in tonight. Thank you for all that you do for Middlesex County.
Hello, everyone. I'm honored to be here in person, but it is an honor to speak at your reorganization ceremony this evening, and I'd like to thank Director Ron Rios for the invitation. Under Director Rios's leadership, Middlesex County has grown in its status as an excellent place to live, to work, and to raise a family, and I'm confident that this Board of Commissioners will continue to make the crucial investments in the county's future. So today, Middlesex County will swear in as Board of Commissioners for the upcoming term. This year's reelected commissioners and our friend Sheriff Mildred Scott are true public servants, and I look forward to seeing all that they will accomplish. I am particularly grateful to be able to congratulate Clary Ascona Barber, Charles Kenny, Chanelle Scott McCollum, and a special congratulations to Ron Rios on being reappointed as the director and Santin Ara as deputy director. I am sure we'll continue to see great things under their leadership. Last, but certainly not least, to my dear friend Mildred Scott, our great sheriff. Congratulations on your reelection, and I thank you for your friendship, your leadership, and work protecting the people of Middlesex County. God bless everyone.
Please welcome Middlesex County Clerk Nancy Pinkin, who will read the certification of election for Sheriff and Member of the County.
A certification of election from the State of New Jersey, County of Middlesex. A statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the County of Middlesex on the eighth day of November in the year of our Lord 2022 for the election of sheriff and county commissioner. The said board did determine that at this said election, Mildred Scott, Charles Kenny, Clary Ascona Barber, and Chanelle Scott McCollum were duly elected sheriff and county commissioners respectively for the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. I do hereby certify that the forebelling is a true, following, correct statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers as filed in the office of the County Clerk of Middlesex. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord 2022. Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to call upon County Commissioner-elect Clarabelle A. Ascona Barber of the City of New Brunswick to be sworn in as a member of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners. I call upon Mayor Jim Kehoe of the City of New Brunswick to administer the oath of office. Accompanying County Commissioner-elect Ascona Barber are her husband Anthony Barber, daughters Elizabeth and Victoria Barber, and mother Maria Ascona.
I, Clarabelle A. Ascona Barber.
I, Clarabelle A. Ascona Barber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of member.
All the duty of members.
Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
Middlesex County Board County Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So hope we got.
Good evening. Let me first wish you all a happy new year. I would like to thank Governor Murphy, Speaker Kaufman, my former boss, Assemblyman Joe Egan, all elected officials, and everyone for being here tonight. Thank you to my family, friends, Director Rios and colleagues on the board, Chairman Kevin McCabe, Vice Chair Masquett, and MCDO staff. Mayor Kehoe, for your support, guidance, and friendship. New Brunswick Democratic Chair TK Jean, and my fellow New Brunswick committee members. And of course, my running mates, Millie, Charlie, Chanelle. We make such a great team. And most importantly, thank you to the boarders of Middlesex County for allowing me to continue serving on the Board of County Commissioners. Over the last three years, we have made many accomplishments. We formed the Complete County Committee for the 2020 census. Through the committee's work, we achieved nearly 75% participation rate, and 20 of our 25 municipalities surpassed the prior census response rate. Another successful initiative is telehealth program. Telehealth provides bilingual virtual services to underserved residents. In 2021, I was proud to partner with Director Rios and Assemblywoman Lopez to launch the pilot program in Port Amboy with the Radisson Bay Y N C A, expanding it to the city of New Brunswick in 2022 with the New Brunswick Tomorrow. Also, the Emergency Rental Assistant Program, launching response to the economic hardships caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The program provide $21 million in rent and utility relief for more than 2,000 county households. I am proud to have played a role in making each of these initiatives a reality, and I look forward to continuing this work in 2023 and beyond. Lastly, I would like to thank the employees of Department of Community Services led by Megan David and Division Directors Melissa, Leila, Jennifer, and Sandy for providing essential services to the county residents during the pandemic. Buenas noches. Bienvenidos sean todos y feliz año nuevo. Gracias por la oportunidad de representarlos como su comisionada. Gracias a mi familia. Esta inauguración se la dedico a mi padre, a papi, que ya no está con nosotros en vida, pero sé que desde lo alto nos bendice. En estos tres años he tenido la oportunidad de trabajar en varios proyectos, empezando con el censo 2020, el programa bilingüe de salud virtual que se inició en Port Amboy en colaboración con el Radisson Bay Y N C A, y recientemente en la ciudad de New Brunswick en colaboración con New Brunswick Tomorrow. El programa de asistencia de emergencia para inquilinos durante la pandemia. Estoy muy orgullosa de jugar un papel importante en estas iniciativas. Gracias, que Dios los bendiga. Thank you. God bless you all. God bless Middlesex County.
At this time, I would like to call upon County Commissioner-elect Charles Kenny of the Township of Woolbridge to be sworn in as a member of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners. I call upon Mayor John McCormick of the Township of Woolbridge to administer the oath of office. Accompanying County Commissioner-elect Kenny are his wife Darlene and his daughter, Alyssa? Alyssa.
I, Charles Kenny. Good. I, Charles Kenny.
I, Charles Kenny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of member.
All the duties of County Commissioner.
Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So hope we got.
So hope we got.
Congratulations.
So the mayor just filled me in. We had a practice where he was going to say it, and all I had to do was say I do. So that didn't work out, huh? So, and if you start to hear music, that's a deep voice guy telling me I've run too long. Speaking of birthdays, I believe one of our county commissioners might be celebrating a birthday today down at the far end down there. She's going to be having her first legal drink later on today. But, and Governor, thank you and Speaker for coming out today. The governor spent a lot of time over the last year in Middlesex County, and normally he comes with a check, and the speaker comes with a pen, and that's a testament to our state elected officials who work very hard to bring back our tax dollars here to Middlesex County. And so, Governor, it's a new year. I know the speaker got a new pen for Christmas. Anything you want to sign? So, in all honesty, thank you all for coming out today. Thank you to Mayor McCormick for taking the time to participate in this ceremony. Anybody who's on his schedule that gets emailed out every week or two, you know that he keeps a very busy schedule, and so I do appreciate the fact that he came out today to administer the oath to me. I want to thank from our MCDO for all their help on the campaign during this past year. Edith, Jen, Patrick, Sam, and all the others that did the hard work behind the scenes that nobody knows about, and they don't get a lot of credit for. They deserve it, and I just want to thank them for a little. And thank you to our Chair Kevin McCabe and our Vice Chair Beatrice Moskowitz for allowing them to do what they do and being the guidance to our MCDO and for all your great work. Thank you. To my running mates, I thank you all very much. So Clary and I ran once before with Millie and Chanelle joined the team for this time around. They are truly family dedicated people, and the love and the dedication that they bring to their family, they also bring to the business of government. And so we are very well off by electing them, and it was a pleasure running with them over this past year and serving with them, and I look forward to doing it over the next three years. So thank you very much. And also to all my colleagues here on the County Commissioner Board, they all are dedicated servants to the public, and it's all about how do we make Middlesex County better? I want to thank our elected officials, local, on the state level, on the local level, our democratic organizations, our chairs from the democratic organizations, and our county committee members for providing me the opportunity to be able to run for this position. And I want to thank the most our voters who came out, took the time to participate in the process, to make sure that their voice is heard, so that we can have a seat at the table to make sure that we bring back to them the hope and opportunity and a better way of life that they deserve. So thank you to them. Also, thank you to organized labor for all their hard work that they put into the election. They are out there on the weekends and the fall, their members are out there knocking on union doors, letting them know why they should vote on the line and the opportunities that are being provided. So thank you to them. Communications Department, the Marketing Department, Shannon, IT Department, our Department of Public Works, our sheriffs and our park rangers that are here today, our county facilities that I'm sure had a hand in putting this together, as well as the college facilities team in putting this together, and the college. Thank you all very much for having us here and also for making this a wonderful presentation and a wonderful night for a swearing in, and I thank you all. I also want to say thank you to, I still have chills, and I've had the pleasure of seeing her sing in other places, Tangi for that fantastic, there you are, fantastic rendition. To our bagpiper and to our veteran for participating and being a part and making this a wonderful program. Thank you all very much. And the New Brunswick Choir, who if you didn't see them, they were here when we started. Thank you to you for coming out and being a part of this. John Carroll, Sam, Steve, Stephen Delina, Amy, Jonathan, and everybody else who's had a hand in putting this together, thank you, greatly appreciated. And to my family, thank you very much for putting up with this. I think I might have told this story before, but if I haven't, when I first started my first swearing in, Alyssa was about 10 months old, and Jess was just a wish. Here we are, a few years later, Alyssa. Here we are, a few years later, Alyssa was able to, she almost couldn't make it because she started a new job, and she didn't know she was going to be here in time, and Jess is working. So they've taken the opportunities that are here in Middlesex County through education and meeting people and just going out there and applying themselves to be productive and be out there in society and working. And so I thank them, especially your family, because of the fact that sometimes all they do is just listen to you. And sometimes that's all you need is somebody to listen. So, I'm going to be closing, but I can't close without mentioning, three years ago I stood here, I was very excited for the future, and then came a pandemic, and it seemed like the world stopped. And then we had loss, and it seemed like the world got a little darker. But through the hard work of our county employees, they kept moving, and they kept moving this county forward. And through those three years where it seemed like nothing was getting done, a lot was getting done. And so I'm excited for the next three years of what we're going to do to move those plans forward. And it is with a heavy heart that, you know, we still move forward. Our past Deputy Director is no longer here. We all know that, but he's here with us in spirit and in our hearts. And I miss him for the times that he would follow me speaking and everybody would forget what I said, because he did such a wonderful job. But in one of those words that he lived by, "Let's move forward, let's leave a mark that can't be erased, neither space by neither space nor time." His favorite artist was Jay-Z, that's a quote that he had. We greatly miss him, but we continue to move forward because he believed in people, he believed in hope, he believed in opportunity, and he believed in making the world a better place. So let's move forward over these next three years to continue. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to call upon County Commissioner-elect Chanelle Scott McCollum, Township of Fiscadoe, to be sworn in as a member of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners. I call upon Sheriff Millie Scott of the County of Middlesex to administer the oath of office. Accompanying County Commissioner-elect Scott McCollum are her husband Larry McCollum, Senior, parents Sheriff Mildred Scott and Richard Scott, and her daughter Alexis and son-in-law Louis, and her brother Ivan and wife Pam.
Before I swear my daughter in, I would like to say how proud I am and how honored I am to swear her in. Chanelle is bright, articulate, a strong leader, and she definitely is an asset to the Board of Commissioners and an asset to the residents of Middlesex County.
I.
I.
Chanelle Scott McCollum.
Chanelle Scott McCollum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance to the saying.
And allegiance to the saying.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
That I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Fulfill all the duties.
Of member.
Of member.
Middlesex County Board.
Middlesex County Board.
Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Middlesex County residents. Thank you for reelecting me for a full three-year term to serve as your Middlesex County Commissioner. It has truly been an honor to serve you for the last year and a half. I look forward to serving you for the next three years as we continue together to make Middlesex County the best place to live, work, and play. I want to thank all the department heads that I've had the pleasure to work with. A special thank you to Khalid Angel and the Business Innovation, Education, and Opportunity Arm of the County. Thank you to President Mark McCormick for hosting us here today at Middlesex College. Thank you for all that you have done and continue to do to make Middlesex College what it is. Superintendent Mark Finkelstein, a special congratulations to you on your retirement, and thank you for all that you have done for our children and adults at the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Thank you. Now, thank you to our County Business Administrator, John Pulamina, John Carroll, and the entire PGA team. Thank you, Amy. I also want to thank my running mates, the sheriff, my mom, Commissioner Charlie Kenny, and Clara Escana Barber, and the entire Board of County Commissioners. Thank you to Tom Kelsall for leading us through all of our legal questions, challenges, and guiding us in the right direction. Thank you. To Mayor Brian Waller and my Fiscadoe family, thank you for always supporting us. And to all of the elected officials here for your support. I want to take a moment, though, to ask the spouses and the children of elected officials that are here today to just stand up for a moment, right? Because quite often, we always thank the elected officials, but I want to thank you for giving them to us and sacrificing your time. It truly is a team effort, and we want you to know that we realize that, so thank you. To the County Democratic Chair Kevin McCabe and Vice Chair Beatrice Moskowitz, Edith Delgado, Executive Director, M C D O, and the entire M C D O team, thank you for your leadership and your support. To the Democratic Party, to the county committee members, thank you for selecting me as one of your three candidates for County Commissioner. Monique, my aide, I want to thank you for your daily support. To Governor Murphy, who just left because he had to run off to another engagement, to the Speaker, we realize how busy you are, but thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come here and support us today. Thank you. Father Jim, thank you for providing us with the benediction today and for being the spiritual leader that you are. Tangi, I don't know what to say, but your voice is just beautiful, so thank you for blessing us with it. And to the sheriff, my mom, thank you for swearing me in, but more importantly, thank you for being the best mom that Ivan, my sister Cheryl, and I could ever want. Thank you for allowing me to stand on your shoulders. As a result, I can see, it is because of the exposure that both you and Dad provided me with that I can stand. So thank you. Last but not least, I want to thank my friends and family that are here today. And quite a few of them are in the front row who have done some really special things for me and my family, and I just want to thank you for all of your, and you know who you are, so thank you. To my son Larry, who is not here today, because he started his first week as a P A student, so wishing him the best, and looking over at President McCormick, thank you for your support and helping him and your staff to get to where he is today, so thank you for that. My daughter Alexis, my son-in-law Louis, and my husband Larry, thank you for your support and your sacrifice. I would not be able to walk this road without you. It would truly be a lonely road, so thank you. Thank you, everyone.
At this time, I would like to call upon Sheriff-elect Mildred S. Scott of the Township of Fiscadoe to be sworn in as the Middlesex County Sheriff. I call upon Senator Bob Smith of the 17th Legislative District of New Jersey to administer the oath of office. Accompanying Sheriff-elect Scott are her husband Richard Scott, her daughter, County Commissioner Chanelle Scott McCollum, husband Larry, son Ivan Scott, and wife Pam, grandchildren Alexis and husband Louis.
I, Mildred S. Scott.
I, Mildred S. Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the saying.
And allegiance to the saying.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Middlesex County Sheriff.
Middlesex County Sheriff.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am truly honored and proud to be serving, starting my fifth term as Middlesex County Sheriff. I want to thank Senator Bob Smith for swearing me in again. Thank you very much. There are so many people I need to thank that made it possible for me to be standing here today. First of all, I'd like to thank my husband, Richard, and my children, and my grandchildren, and my siblings, my family and my friends, for all your support for all these years. I want to thank the Middlesex County Democratic Party, Chairman Kevin McCabe, Vice Chair Beatrice Moskowitz, the Democratic Committee men and women who selected me as their candidate. Thank you. I have said that I've been truly blessed, and I definitely believe that. There are so many people that made this possible for me. I want to thank my office, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, my under Sheriff, Kevin Harris, and my staff for making Middlesex County Sheriff's Office the best in the land. Thank you very much. I thank my director, Joe Crissa, thank you for all your support. I thank the Board of Commissioners for all your support, thank you throughout the years, and the Department Administration, thank you very much. I thank the judges and judicial staff for all their support and working with me throughout these many years, and I thank my Middlesex County law enforcement family. And I say that, I'm talking about the prosecutor's office and their staff, the Warden Cranston and his staff, and the Middlesex County Chiefs of Police. Thank you for all the support that you have given my office throughout these many years. Thank you, thank you very much. You know, my daughter spoke about family and how important family is, and sometimes we take so much for granted, and our lives, political lives, our law enforcement lives, are always out there, we put ourselves in the front line, and I want to thank you all for doing that, for being part of our family. And you all out there are part of our family, through all the years you've been there for part of our family. But I don't think any of us would be here today if it wasn't for the residents of Middlesex County that voted for us to be reelected again and again and again. Thank you very much, Middlesex County. To all the volunteers throughout the years that volunteered their time, Tangi, and you're one of them, thank you. Thank you for being very supportive for all of us. You know, in my office, I have a youth group, and I have a community awareness group, and a lot of them have interned with me throughout the years, and they come back and they volunteer their time. And I want to thank some of you that are here today, thank you for all your support. I want to close to say, my running mates, you are the best, Clara, Charlie, and my daughter Chanelle. You know, I've had an opportunity to just spread everybody here, even John Pulamina. So I say to you, thank you through all the years, thank you for caring, thank you for sharing all your wisdom, and may God bless us all. Thank you very much.
I will now call the roll for this reorganization meeting. County Commissioner Escana Barber?
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Here.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Rios?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
We will now entertain a motion to nominate the Director of this Board for the year 2023. I recognize County Commissioner Scott McCollum.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to nominate Commissioner Ron Rios to serve as the Director for the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners for 2023. Ron is a team player. He is passionate about his role of Commissioner and serving the residents of Middlesex County. He is a true public servant. You may have heard the Director use a lot of pronouns when he speaks. It is very important to listen to what people say. And I quote-
It is very important to listen to what people say, and I quote Commissioner Rios, "It is not 'me,' it is 'we.' It is not 'I,' it is 'us.'" Know that as your Director, our Director, he will ensure that it is not about us, it's about you, the residents. Director Rios, I nominate you today as the Director for the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners.
The name of County Commissioner Ronald G. Rios has been placed in nomination for Director by County Commissioner Scott McCollum. I now recognize County Commissioner Kenny.
I second the nomination.
A motion has been made and seconded to nominate County Commissioner Ronald G. Rios as Director of the Board. Are there any other nominations? I declare nominations closed. I will now call the role for the election of County Commissioner Ronald G. Rios as Director for the year 2023. County Commissioner Asco Nabarber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Rios.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tomaro.
Yes.
The Director of this Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023 has been selected, County Commissioner Ronald G. Rios of the Borough of Carteret. I would now like to call upon County Commissioner Rios to be sworn in as Director of this Board of County Commissioners. I will now ask the Honorable Joseph Vitale, Senator of the Nineteenth Legislative District of New Jersey, to administer the oath of office, to County Commissioner Director-elect Rios. Accompanying Director-elect Rios is his wife, Mickey.
I, Ronald G. Rios.
I, Ronald G. Rios.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, justly, power.
Faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
The Director of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
Director of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here tonight. I want to begin by taking a moment to thank our distinguished guests who are here this evening, Assembly Speaker Greg Coughlin, Governor Phil Murphy, as well, I would like to recognize my colleagues, Clary, Charlie, Chanel, and Millie on their swearing-in. It is an honor and a privilege to serve with you. And as always, I must thank my wife, Mickey, my family, for their love and support. Without them, I would not be able to stand here today. Over the past year, my colleagues and I have been proud to see our community overcome challenges and fulfill the promise of a brighter future for our residents, for our businesses, and for our families. We've been able to do this by building public and private partnerships at the local, state, and federal level. These collaborations make a brighter future possible. Much of this collaboration starts with our boards and commissions. Hundreds of dedicated volunteers contribute to the county by supporting cherished public institutions like this college, or by serving on various boards and commissions. Their work is critical to our success. I'd like to ask the members of our boards and commissions to stand and be recognized. Thank you for all you do. And alongside those partnerships are the lifeblood of what we do, our county employees, our county team, many of whom join us every year at this event. You are the heart and soul of our operation. My fellow commissioners and I are continually in awe of your commitment to residents and businesses. I'd like to invite you to please stand and be recognized. You and the entire community, thank you. Finally, I would like to also take a moment to thank my colleagues for once again selecting me to serve as Director of this Board. It is an absolute honor and a privilege to work with such dedicated public servants. I'm grateful to having this opportunity to continue in this role. This Board of Commissioners is dedicated to building upon the foundation of 2040, our strategic plan for long-term success spearheaded by the Department of Transportation under the leadership of County Commissioner Charlie Kenny. Everything we do supports our vision for a brighter future for everyone who lives, works, and plays here in Middlesex County. The county envisions a brighter future that grants better access to innovative spaces and cutting-edge healthcare treatment for those within and around Middlesex County through key investments in transformative community projects. The New Jersey Innovation Hub, as well as the Jack and Cheryl Morris Cancer Center, will attract opportunity, business, and talent from throughout the county, the state, and the region. As a core partner of the hub, Middlesex County is committed to this dynamic facility which represents a significant investment in the future of innovation in New Jersey. I am proud to share that Middlesex County, through the Improvement Authority, plans to use our AAA bond rating to provide the financing mechanism for nearly $500 million project funds. In fact, the hub will serve as the future command center for the county's living laboratory for autonomous technology, Data City. And with a $25 million investment in the Morris Cancer Center, the county and its partners will create an elite facility to transform cancer care through a combination of research, education, and patient care. In addition to providing world-class cancer treatment for our residents right here in Middlesex County, the center will provide opportunities for students at Middlesex College and Middlesex County Magnet Schools through robust courses and hands-on student training. We envision a brighter future in which we are better connected to our neighbors both geographically and culturally through groundbreaking transportation projects. To do this, the county, through the Improvement Authority, is currently managing two major enhancements in New Brunswick and North Brunswick through northeast corridor line with New Jersey Transit. At the New Brunswick train station, the county will celebrate our rich past by marrying the history of the New Brunswick Station's main building, built more than 120 years ago, with modern amenities and technologies needed to support a bustling train station for the future. The renovated station will connect people with state-of-the-art facilities like the hub and the Morris Cancer Center. And a few miles down the track in North Brunswick, significant progress continues as we are nearing a major milestone, the completion of the concept design for the new train station. These projects will allow for broader access within and beyond our borders, easing commutes on major thoroughfares, attracting new revenue to the region, and allowing those within and beyond our county to better access our recreational facilities like our 19-county parks, our more than 13,000 acres of open space and preserved farmland, and our many performing art centers. We envision a future that changes the educational landscape to nurture a new generation of entrepreneurs, inventors, collaborators, and contributors. To do this, we must foster a workforce of the future and nurture a new generation of learners by making vital investments designed to strengthen and grow our college, our magnet schools, and our pipeline of talented, well-prepared workers who are ready to move into or advance in all industries, especially the county's key business sectors, life sciences, autonomous technology, and food innovation. For a century, Middlesex County has been providing award-winning education to students in a range of fields, making us an academic destination for families around the region. We knew it was time that the names and visual identities of these schools reflect the first-rate education that they provide. Both Middlesex County Magnet Schools and Middlesex College have undergone a transformation to better align with the county's distinctive brand strategy and economic growth plans. The Middlesex County Magnet Schools have entered a new era in their more than 100-year history with a new name and visual identity to accurately reflect the district's evolution and specialized education to include skills-based training and rigorous academic coursework. Similarly, at Middlesex College, we are seeing a return on our investment in a new identity with enrollment up 3% in 2022, which is far above the state and national average for two-year colleges. In the months and years to come, the college and the surrounding community will undergo a rebirth through the Community Innovation and Opportunity Strategic Investment Plan, made possible in large part because of the county's financial strength. This comprehensive plan will make the Middlesex College campus a space for more than just the academic community, but for the county community as a whole and as a regional attraction.
How does a county build for a brighter future? By listening to the community, planning ahead, and acting when the time is right.
Here in Middlesex County, over the last decade, we have been focused on community and innovation opportunities as strategic investments.
We are always striving to meet current challenges by bringing everyone, private, public, academic, all the partners together.
Looking ahead and finding innovative ways to ensure that our county continues to be the best place to live, work, and play for generations to come.
How does a workforce adapt to change at an even faster pace? By taking the time to educate.
Whether in high school, college, or adults seeking new opportunities, collaboration builds the foundation for the workforce of the future.
Middlesex College is honored to become an even bigger focal point for education and workforce development in Middlesex County.
How does a community grow beyond its borders? By investing in infrastructure, arts, and culture.
Creating new and exciting activities and experiences improves the lives of so many families and individuals.
New Jersey and Middlesex County, leading together, have identified innovative opportunities to promote broader economic development that not just benefits each other, but the entire northeast corridor. We are proud to announce the Community Innovation and Opportunity Strategic Investment Plan.
The Community Innovation and Opportunity Strategic Investment Plan is a multi-phased investment in a brighter future. It begins with a multipurpose community venue and student center, which will host concerts, cultural gatherings, and sporting events, and further enhances the experience and opportunities offered at Middlesex College with a food court and spaces for students and faculty to meet, study, and learn.
Our investment in the Community Innovation and Opportunity Plan will create a new student center for our amazing college.
It will give us the chance to throw the fans.
Next, an academic workforce development and conference center with flexible lab space, state-of-the-art technology, classrooms, office space, and a conference facility to attract regional business and technology conferences.
The Community Innovation and Opportunity Plan will create even more career and job opportunities in Middlesex County.
It will help us with access to a ready workforce across many industries.
A new community park destination that can be enjoyed by all, with areas focused on children's recreation and education. A brand-new magnet school focused on leading industries like environmental technology and engineering, information communications, and global logistics.
The Community Innovation and Opportunity Strategic Investment Plan.
Includes a new magnet school.
To prepare us.
For the careers of tomorrow.
Expansion of the canvases with outdoor spaces, public art, seating, and water features. A destination athletic complex featuring state-of-the-art facilities for hosting state, regional, and national tournaments with multi-sport synthetic turf fields, a track.
And an official cricket pitch, which will give us a chance to show you our amazing sport.
How does a community maximize innovation opportunities? By leading together.
We make these investments to improve our overall quality of life.
And grow the vital services we provide for our residents and our businesses.
Middlesex County is building the workforce of the future, collaborating and improving our infrastructure.
To build on our vibrant arts and culture.
While in the past, we look to the future.
We're all in this as one. As Middlesex County goes, in so many ways, so goes New Jersey. When Middlesex succeeds, our whole state succeeds.
We are Middlesex County, leading together for a brighter future.
As you can see, we have big plans for how our physical infrastructure will build a better future for those who live, work, and play here. But we also envision a brighter future beyond the state-of-the-art facilities and regional attractions to focus on continuing to offer core services and programs geared toward making a better life for our families. Like our telehealth and community health programs that ensure county residents have the tools needed to access vital healthcare, services, and education, including preventative measures and acute care for injuries and illnesses. Like the significant support the county has put behind the state's anchor property tax relief program to make sure every eligible Middlesex County homeowner and renter gets access to this program. As well, our Coming Home and Housing First Funds provide support to the most vulnerable in our communities, and our Veterans Housing Assistance Program has helped hundreds of veterans since its inception. This board will remain committed to helping our families, and especially our veterans. I would like to ask our veterans and their families to please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your service and service. Throughout the year, Governor Murphy has spoken about the importance of mental health, and my colleagues and I on the board agree. This is a major concern in the post-pandemic environment. We have seen a focus on it nationally with the creation of the 988 hotline. Here at home, we intend to focus on mental health with a comprehensive effort in a range of areas from community services, education, and law enforcement to the Arts Institute and the Uplowsby Center. Governor, we're ready and willing to partner with you however we can, and I know he left, but he got the message, to make sure our families have the resources that they need. Our board envisions a brighter future for all members of the Middlesex County community, residents, businesses, and county employees alike. Not only does our emphasis on physical and mental health support our employees through initiatives like the wellness program, but our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging study is underway. A professional partner is assisting us in taking an honest look at county policies, procedures, and programming, helping us identify where we can improve. The study will conclude this year, and we'll be sharing how we can continue to ensure fairness for everyone in our county. Through our investments in talent, infrastructure, and our residents, we are building an even brighter future that is unique only to Middlesex County. Together with you, we trust that we will continue to succeed in our many endeavors. On behalf of myself and my colleagues on the board, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. May God bless you all. May God protect our troops and law enforcement and bring them home safe. Thank you, Governor. At this time, I At this time, I recognize County Commissioner Ascoa Barber for a motion to spread the director's message upon the minutes of this meeting.
I make a motion to spread the director's message in the minutes for this meeting.
I recognize County Commissioner Narra to second the motion.
I second that motion.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will entertain a motion to nominate the Deputy Director of this Board for the year 2023. I recognize County Commissioner Cockle.
I am very proud, and not just because it's her birthday, but because she's a dedicated, hardworking, and a true public servant that enjoys spending time with the people who have supported her and also extends hands to even people who haven't always supported her because she truly wants to represent and serve the people in all of our communities. With that, I would like to nominate Santina for the Deputy Director of the Board for the Year 2023.
At this time, I'd like to recognize County Commissioner Tamaro.
It's my honor to second the nomination for Santina person who rolls up her sleeves and goes down and does the work every day for this county. And also, happy birthday, Santina. I second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been made to second it to nominate County Commissioner Santina as Deputy Director of this Board. Any other nominations? At this time, I declare the nominations closed. Clerk will now call a roll for the election of County Commissioner Santina as Deputy Director for the Year 2023.
County Commissioner Ascoa Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Cockle. County Commissioner McCullough. County Commissioner Narra.
Let me think about that one.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes, please join me in a round of applause to welcome the Deputy Director of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners. I call upon the Honorable Senator Patrick Dykman, Senator of the 18th District, who will administer the oath of office to County Commissioner Deputy Director-elect Santina.
I checked with my tally, and he said we gotta do this. Happy Birthday!
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Santina. Happy Birthday to you.
I, Santina.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of Deputy Director, Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners.
Of Deputy Director of the Board of Directors of the Middlesex County Commissioners.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
The Deputy Director is accompanied by her mother, Krancy. Okay. At this time, we will have public discussion on any item listed on the agenda. Anyone in the overflow room is welcome to join us in the auditorium to use the microphones to share public comments. Microphones are available on either side of the room. This time, only comments on the resolutions listed on the agenda. Swing motion. Any comments? I make a motion to close the I'm sorry. Think it might be out of my sight. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville. I'm from the great city of New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. And I just wanted to ask about the schedule for the year. Which meetings will not have public comment opportunities for general matters of interest in the county?
It will be listed on the meeting calendar.
Yes, can you tell me which ones?
Director, is that available in the clerk's office? Yes. Yeah, that'll be available in the clerk's office.
Okay, I guess I'll just get to the point. I wanted to encourage you not to have those kind of meetings because when people come to your meeting and have something they want to say, they don't get the opportunity to say it because you don't offer that opportunity and you restrict the comments to only resolutions. Now, that doesn't foster public input. And I know that your video highlighted the need and how critical it is to have public input and to listen to your constituents. And so I just encourage you to, when it comes time to have those meetings, change the agenda to add public comment. And I do want to clarify, today there will be a general public comment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll come back and talk more then. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close? Motion to close. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does any County Commissioner have any resolutions that they have to vote on separately? Okay, Mr. Kelso, would you please read the motion?
Yes, Commissioner Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt the agenda consisting of Resolution Numbers 23-01 to Resolution 23-19.
Yes, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call a roll.
County Commissioner Ascoa Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Cockle.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wants to make any comments? Seeing none? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again, Charlie Cradaville. And this time, I'm here not as your favorite local journalist, but as the Central Jersey organizer for Food and Water Block. And I'm speaking on behalf of our 73,000 members around the state. I do want to say, first of all, congratulations to all the winners, all the elections around the county, and everybody who put work into administering those elections. I know it's difficult on all sides. And I wish everyone the best. But I'm here to discuss the biggest threat to our air quality and climate: CPB's plan for a new dirty gas power plant in Woodbridge. If approved, this proposal would take us backwards in the existential battle against the climate crisis and pollute the air all over Central Jersey. And that's why 10 elected government bodies have adopted resolutions opposing the plan. And I want to give a shout out to all of them and thank everyone who was involved in making that happen from the grassroots on up. And those resolutions call on the governor and his administration to reject the air pollution permit that would be needed for this destructive project to operate. This time last year, there was only one bold and brave town that had taken that stand, and that was Edison in 2021. And again, thank you to everybody who made that possible. In 2022, nine additional elected government bodies took that stand, passed that kind of a resolution. So credit where credit is due, thank you to the borough of Highland Park, the Highland Park Board of Education, the City of Hoboken, the City of Perth Amboy, Township of Franklin, the City of Rawaway, Township of South Brunswick, and Somerset County. That's right, the county commissioners in a neighboring county saw a fit to weigh in on this and come out against this climate-destroying proposal. We need to make 2023 the year that Middlesex County takes that stand for its residents and their health. And we need to make 2023 the year where Governor Murphy finally walks his talk on the climate and rejects this destructive project. So I do have to ask, because I haven't heard a satisfactory answer yet, why isn't this county, our county, joining Edison, Highland Park, Perth Amboy, South Brunswick in taking a stand against this bad project? More to the point, if Somerset County's Board of Commissioners saw a fit to unanimously pass a resolution opposing the construction of this gas plant in our county, why won't you even place such an item on your agenda for discussion?
Thank you for your comments.
So I'll note, I still have not gotten a satisfactory answer to those questions. And I would respectfully ask you to look in your heart, think of the children and the grandchildren of today and the world that you are leaving behind for them. Decision-makers, leaders are stepping up, giving leaders a chance to lead. And in those towns, they're stepping up and they're leading. We need you to live up to that title of being a leader and put on your agenda a resolution opposing this power plant. I'll ask once more if you can just say why you won't do that. Can you, for the public's benefit, can you tell us why won't you do that for the residents? Don't do it for me, for the residents.
Mr. Cradaville, thank you for your comments.
Well, again, I'll urge you to look inside and think about this issue and change your opinion. Do the right thing. And I want to encourage everyone who's out there listening, wherever you are, to learn more about how you and your town can get involved in protecting our air, our health, and our climate by stopping this bad project, the biggest threat to our air and climate here in Middlesex County. You can find out how to get more involved at the website don'tgasmiddlesex.com. Again, we're giving local leaders a chance to lead. This is an issue where obviously the governor cares what you all think. That's why he took time out of his day to be here. And it would be very meaningful for you all to weigh in on this project. And I don't think that we've heard any good reasons to support competitive power ventures and their efforts to pollute our air. So I would ask you to stand up against that. Stand with the residents, stand with our members, please. Do the right thing. Let's make 2023 the year that Middlesex County finally takes a stand against climate change. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Move to close the public portion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, at this point, the clerk will read the list of committees appointed by myself.
County Administration, County Commissioner Director Ronald G. Rios; Department of Innovation, Education, and Opportunity; County Commissioner Chanel Scott McCullough; Department of Finance; County Commissioner Leslie Cockle; Department of Community Services; County Commissioner Clarabelle Ascoa Barber; Department of Infrastructure Management; County Commissioner Charles Tamaro; Department of Transportation; County Commissioner Charles Kenny; and Department of Public Safety and Health; County Commissioner Deputy Director Santina.
Okay, before we close, I'd like to recognize some of the folks that are here tonight with us, some of the elected officials. We have, from the Assembly, Wayne DeAngelo, Sadaf Jaffer, Roy Fryman, Joe Egan, Rob Karabincheck, Stody Stanley, Speaker Craig Coughlin, Ivan Lopez, and State Senators Linda Greenstein, Bob Smith, Pat Dykman, and Joe White-Tower. We have mayors in the House: Mayor Dan Ryman, Jason Solento, Brett Cohen, Sam Joshi, former mayor Gail Brill-Mittler, Jonathan Bush, Jim Cahill, Helman Kaba, Ryan Waller, Fred Henry, Charlie Carley, Jackie Palmer, John McCormick, and Acting Mayor of Highland Park, Elsie Foster. We have Executive Director from the Improvement Authority, Jim Polos, and Executive Director from the Utilities Authority, Joe Cryan, and Chair John Wiley. Middlesex College, the Chair and Trustee's Mark Finkelstein, and the President, Mark McCormick. And from Middlesex County Magnet School, Superintendent Jorge Diaz. We have, from Somerset County Commissioner Sarah Soy, Mercer County Commissioner John Semino, and New Jersey Motor Vehicle Chief Administrator Trish Little Floyd. I thank you all for being here tonight. And I'm pleased to, it's my honor to introduce Sheila Hobson of Grace Baptist Church to deliver the benediction.
Praise the Lord, I ask you to please stand. Father, we just thank you right now in the name of Jesus, Father. We thank you for what our ears have heard and what our eyes have seen. Father, you said in your word that we must, that we must pray for our leaders. So Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask that you will hear us as we pray for the leaders of this, not only this county, but this state. That Father God, you will give them everything that they stand in the need of. Your word said that you would. And Father God, that you will hear them as they call out to you. We ask, Father, that you will bless them and build a hedge around them, Father. Let no hurt or harm come to them in the name of Jesus, Father. Oh, Lord, we just thank you right now. We ask, Father God, that you will not only lead them, guide them, and be with them. And Father, we just thank you that you blessed us with these leaders, the leaders, Father God, that hear us when we call out. The leaders, Father, that listen when we call them. Oh, Father, we just say thank you for that. And Father, we ask that you will continue to bless them as they go about doing what you would have them to do. And Father, we give you the honor and give you the praise. We ask, Father, that when we leave this place, we will not leave your presence and that you will continue to guide us in the direction that you would have us to go. Travel in mercy, Father, travel in mercy. Oh, Lord, we say thank you. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
At this time, we will see the difference. There's a motion from Commissioner Narra to adjourn Deputy Director.
I'll make it again, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and adjourned.